Welcome. Good to have you here. It's nice to have a few town roads cleared. Wasn't fun Saturday morning, was it?
Counselor says more than a few.
Anyway, it's good to have you here. Councilor P. Boyd would be like to have you to offer opening prayer for us, please.
Father of heaven, we are humbled to serve this fine town and to represent the people in responsible and intelligent ways. We ask always for thy guidance to make decisions that are pleasing unto thee and to those we represent. We ask and say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, so on your agenda, item number three there, there is one addition. There's a delegation that will be coming about ten after four. Gordon Atkins coming to talk about subdivision.
Delegation.
Pardon me?
Is that under delegation?
That's under delegation, yeah.
Number five?
Be about number five.
Five A.
Not in camera.
Not, no. Not at this point in time.
Okay.
Okay, so do we need to...
You see, how can we introduce?
That's gonna happen, yeah. And then under number five, two, Marion's gonna take a few moments and introduce Hawkins Goine to us, for those of you who don't know him. It'd be good to get to know him. So before we move on to that, then, all in favor of that, do we have to ask for a vote for the add to delegation there?
I'll make a motion to accept the...
Okay, picture.
Agenda has amended.
Has amended? Okay, all in favor? Okay, good. Okay, have you had a chance to look over the minutes? Is there anything in the... We had the prayers. Yeah. The short one. This is nice to... Counselor, welcome. Okay, have you had a chance to look over the minutes? Is there anything there that need to be adjusted, changed, or...
No, I put a motion for all the minutes.
Okay. Mayor Cronin, have you seen the motion to approve the minutes as they are? All in favor? Okay. All right. Then this time we'll turn the time order to Marion.
Welcome to the forefront. So I'd just like to introduce, this is Hawkins Goine, and he has started his employment with the town in Cartson as of yesterday, December 1st. He will be the Director of Finance and Administration, replacing Noel Smith when she retires sometime early in the spring. We haven't determined that date yet. So we'd like to welcome him and introduce him to all the councilors. I believe you've probably met them all prior to the meeting, so we're glad to have him on our team, best municipal team in Alberta.
Yeah.
In Canada, there you go.
They've been the national news. As indicated that they want to move here as a result. So that's good stuff, in the best town.
So we know Hawkins will bring a lot of value to the organization, and we're looking forward to working with him, so.
That's his job description, specifically "value."
Value. Well, welcome. With dollar signs.
That's right, that's right.
With a smile like yours, we'll be happy.
We'll be good. Happy to be here.
Yeah, good to have you here. It'll be more than just pencils to sharpen.
Yeah.
So welcome to stay and watch some of the proceedings if you'd like to, if you don't have to. Okay, so any business arising from the minutes last meeting? Not, then we'll move on to new business. We do have Gordon Atkins will be coming shortly, so we might as well move to number seven. Okay, so that's subdivision extension of policy, extension approval policy.
I remember that was something we had asked administration to come forward with in order for us to have proper parameters regarding extensions of approval of subdivision for the committee that sits on it. And Counselor P. Boyd, you sit on it and...
Counselor, yes, paragraphing question, second, the last paragraph, and it seems...
On the last, on the back page.
I didn't put that on.
Well, let's see the paragraph, the analysis.
Right, right.
And does it satisfy your need, the way it's written?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's gonna do it.
I felt it was pretty good questions to be asked.
Any question, any other question?
That was well done. I mean, it doesn't nail us down to have, you know, so it just gives us all of the considerations that we need to consider when we have a subdivision extension, because, you know, as we know with one that we just extended, that there's sometimes extenuating circumstances. We just have to consider all of those things. And so the way that just lays them out, it gives us a chance to look at all of those items before we make an extension. And I think it's...
So if I need to...
So is this an existing policy, or one that needs to be voted on?
New policy.
New policy.
Yes, so you need to...
Right. And does that require three readings?
No, it's just a policy, so we can just make a motion to recommend...
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a recommendation, we approve the new policy S-65 in subdivision extension.
Okay, so we have a recommendation, all in favor?
And a new date, December?
Pardon me?
And a new date, December?
New date, yeah. It would have to change that to December the 2nd, right? Date approved?
Nope, nope.
Until we do it on the...
On the council meeting.
Do it at the council meeting, that's next Tuesday.
No. It's dated today, isn't it?
No, it's fine. There's no date in there, it just had November dash, so we'll just change it to whatever day it's up there.
That'd probably be next meeting, December 9th, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. 9th, okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
You've got your delegation here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If there is some intent for this to be moved to a further session in camera, do you want to just go through these policies beforehand, before the delegation, or do you want to deal with the delegation first?
Can we ask him?
We could probably quickly do this, okay? Gordon, are you okay if we go on and move on a little bit of this business and move through it as quick as we can?
Sure.
Okay. All right, then, let's go through, next one is policy 120-1, inspection of town facilities policy.
Jeff, would you like to talk to that, please?
The intent of the policy that the Joint Health and Safety Committee met, right now we inspect all facilities and all areas monthly. And when you have, for example, some of your facilities aren't used six months a year or seasonal, it's a bit redundant, so we felt we could maintain the same level of safety for the workers and for the public. And you can see as per the schedule, we've just changed the schedule for some of the facilities. By default, they're monthly, except where they're expressly written in there.
Jeff, could I ask you something? There is a recommendation there to inspect the pond, yeah, quarterly, every three months.
Can you say that one again, sorry, ma'am?
The pond, the dock pond.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Every three months. I'm just wondering, because there are animals there, is it wise to have it every three months? Raymond is just having, as you know, some difficulty with that pond, so I'm just wondering...
This is the safety inspection, looking for areas that may be unsafe to the users. It's not a, it's not that we just go in and look over cleanliness or custodial...
It's not a welfare, yeah.
No, no. This is simply, we look at the facility, there's a checklist specific to each facility that says we're looking at, you know, we're looking at the furnace, we're looking at the dampers and the ventilation, and we're looking at how the building is performing mechanically and structurally. So it's really to make sure there's nothing unsafe for our workers. The reason the pond was put quarterly is we don't have the public there.
Yes, I understand.
It's not a public building. So really Lloyd is the only one, aside from a couple of volunteers on occasion, that ever goes in there, so it's not frequently used by the public.
And I would imagine if there was a breakdown in the heater or whatever, he would notice that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. He's still there checking on it, pretty much daily.
Daily.
Yeah, daily.
Right, so that is not an issue there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Banger, you had a question for Jeff?
Jeff, I noticed that the inspections are done by the foremen's, or the supervisors, facilities supervisors. Now, we had a little bit of a problem when it was last week or two weeks ago with one of our furnaces or heaters or something like that. Is it wise for us to have an outside outfit come in maybe once or twice a year and do the inspections?
Where did we have an issue, did?
The lighting of the...
Oh, yeah, with the water heater at the shop, yeah, sure.
Just for clarification, this isn't for the specifics of how the mechanics are working of the building, right? It is for the safety components. So is there a trip hazard, is there...
Is all the lighting working, is...
Are your eyebrows at risk?
Sure, fair enough.
So those, yes, those inspections, counselor, are done from external bodies where required, yes.
The other thing I might mention is that tank, I think it was the tank actually that we lit, wasn't it? It's being changed with an electronic ignition next year, so that issue will go away.
Yeah, I happened to be here and just, you know, but I was just wondering, when I look at this, is it, if there's something that we could identify from an outside source, you know, coming in and inspecting something like that?
That's not the intent of these policies, it's simply for our safety program.
All right, thank you.
Okay, is there any other thoughts, Counselor Creed?
I will make a motion, we recommend to council to approve this policy. I think it's a, it's a good policy. Actually, I like the way they did it, because some of the buildings that, you know, may not be used, like the pool, will still be inspected monthly, which sometimes you need to, you know, even when a building is not being used, you need to be in there to make sure things are, you know, the buildings like the town shop where they're there every day, it's, you know, they will see kind of immediate needs because they're there, but quarterly for safety inspection looks like a good, a good system. I like the way that's laid out. So anyway, I make that motion.
Okay, any questions? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Okay, did we want to go on to this Carson Minor Hockey letter? Okay, Carson Minor Hockey Association, the figure skating club would like to install and upgrade a new PA system. The ice arena feel that a new one will improve the arena greatly and make it more enjoyable for all those that are attending the Carson Hockey game, figure skating, and public skating. We're asking if the town would help with some of the costs of buying and installing a PA system. It'd be greatly appreciated if we could have your support with this. And they have enclosed a quote here, like the bottom line is the quote is $47.91. And if I recall, we discussed this at council meeting about a kind of a cost sharing, so that they're asking the council to, the town to provide part of the money on this. So any thoughts on this, Counselor Banger?
Is there anything that we could do in kind, like using our man lift to run cables and stickers and stuff like that?
Not necessarily, no. Mr. Chairman, Jeff just spoke with the organization about an hour ago, so maybe he could provide a bit of an update on the expectations, if that helps.
Okay, bear in mind, Jeff, that'd be great.
Yeah, thanks. One of the things I asked Jackie after she sent this letter in, and then she wanted to meet with figure skating before she got back to me, was the expediency of the purchase. Would it be possible that we looked at maybe a C-FEP grant that the figure skating club or minor hockey were to front to get half the money? And there are a couple of trade-offs in doing that that we talked about. One is, they wouldn't know if they were approved until probably June.
Yeah.
And so they would miss this entire season, and there's a chance they won't get approved. So we discussed that a little bit. Jackie phoned me back about an hour ago, because I asked her to get back to me before the meeting. And their position with figure skating is, the system is inadequate particularly for what figure skating needs, and they'd really like to get something put in by Christmas. And on approval of this quote, they would have it done by, in the next four or five days. So they're, they understand that if council isn't amenable to sharing the cost, that might be the next, it's obviously the next best option. But they're, all things considered, their preference is if they can move on this immediately, that's what they would like to do, so that they can use it for the season.
Okay, Mayor Cronin?
Can I just ask, when they said sharing, are they talking 50/50, or are they talking some other percentage?
They're talking a third, third, third. Figure skating, minor hockey, and town, is what they're considering.
Counselor Banger, then, Counselor P. Boyd?
Jeff, I noticed there's only one quote. Is this, is this a good practice to get only one quote for work?
I can't speak to that one exactly. I do know that both minor hockey and figure skating have received other quotes in the past. This has been something, and Marion could probably speak about, back when she was taking care of that too. This has been something that's been kicked around for a long time, and it is a necessity to the facility. So I, this quote actually came through figure skating, and I am aware that minor hockey also got one last season, that they were able to use as well, I think from Sharps or somebody like that. So I think they sent us the one that they felt was the best, if I understand it correctly.
Okay, Counselor P. Boyd?
So the expectation would be that the system is owned by the town?
Yes.
So it's our asset?
Yeah.
And just based on your conversation with them, would you say they'd be favorable to maybe some internal fundraising, like between the two of them?
They are doing that right now.
They're doing that right now.
Yeah, as we speak, both organizations are doing community-based fundraising for their share.
Is their expectation then half from us?
Sixteen hundred.
Oh, just a third?
Yeah.
Sixteen hundred.
Yeah, they'd like to see us partners.
So, Jeff?
Just to clarify, if we, you know, go ahead with it right now, this doesn't preclude them still being able to, you know, apply for the C-FEP grant to...
It does.
It does?
C-FEP will not pay for anything that was initiated prior to approval.
Oh, okay.
So in essence, they could not proceed until probably, I would guess, best case middle of May, worst case, end of June, because the quarter would be the end of April, I think, is when they were to June here.
So if they go ahead right now, they couldn't apply for the C-FEP?
So our portion is about $1,597, so $1,600. Counselor Evans?
My concern is that they went all the way to Medicine Hat to get a quote. I'm sure there's places in London which could do the same thing, and then we wouldn't be looking at...
The transportation.
$225 just for traveling.
Yeah, I could ask them what the competitive quotes look like. I don't know, because this was something they brought to us who they thought was the best one. I would say from when we were working on this building, that there wasn't a lot of options out left, as difficult as it may seem.
See, the other problem I see is if you have a problem, and it's in the middle of winter, they're gonna have problems getting here sometimes, so you're gonna have long delays before it's fixed.
Potentially.
Mayor Cronin?
Really, I'm ready to put a recommendation forward that we accept in principle to be partner with the hockey ring, with the hockey association, and with the ice skating association to one-third of the cost of an audio system replacement.
And recommend to council?
And recommendation to council.
To a maximum amount?
To a maximum...
Sixteen hundred?
I would say, yeah, sixteen hundred seems to be a fair figure.
Any other, any other questions on that? I would just suggest, I think Counselor Banger and I kind of had some eye contact here, that that 45 cents a kilometer is about half the normal rate, so it's not an absorbent amount either.
Alt is 53 cents right now.
If it would help for council, I can certainly have the conversation to say, do we have any other quotes, what do they look like to, you know, or could they get one before they give this one the okay?
That's why I say in principle, meaning you might want to...
It's a reasonable request, I can go back to them.
Doesn't necessarily mean it'll be this one.
Yeah, I mean, there's...
Counselor P. Boyd?
Was there any discussion about what would become of the existing system?
Well, half the speakers are blown. It's really not good for much. It's not functioning very well at all.
Maybe it's within the museum.
Yeah. Museums always looking for archive material, right? No, I don't see much salvage in it, knowing what I know of.
Counselor Banger?
Jeff, since my boys are growing up and moved away and everything, I haven't been down to the rink that often. When I was there, the PA system was absolutely horrifying. Is it gonna put these other two groups at risk a little bit financially with their contribution to it?
This is initiated by them.
And do we subsidize their financing?
$1,600, was...
No, no. I mean, do we, do we, do we put money into the figure skating club and into minor hockey?
No.
Well, we do in the sense that we lose money in the hockey area.
Yeah, if you wanted us to have complete cost recovery, we would triple their rate hourly rate, but that would kill the program effectively.
No, they each take their turn running the concessions, and they earn the money from the concessions, is that right?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Theoretically, they can each take their turn running the concession.
Okay.
I can speak to this a little bit, because I was president of minor hockey for the last one. Figure skating has not wanted to run the concession simply just because of volunteer numbers, and it's hockey that's there the majority of the time. So hockey's had it the last few years, and actually this year it's almost third-partied out to a group that hockey found to run it for them. So we've been fine, I mean, they're doing a great job this year, actually. It's as good as it's been in years.
Okay.
So they're doing a great job of it, and it's a good arrangement. They seem to be very good. So we've just wanted somebody in there, and minor hockey for probably the last five or six years has been the one responsible for the concession.
Counselor Banger?
I hate to keep at this, but are we upgrading the ice rink at any point in time?
We did, yes, and we have been, and yes, we will be. We did a major overhaul on the cooling system two years ago, so we rebuilt the engine on the plant. We've redone a lot of the puck board around the outside, and we had to do some repairs on the cooling system and the floor. That was more repair than improvement, but, yeah, we've done...
What else have we done?
Yeah, and it's part of the recreation master plan. We just had Ferrari Westwood go through the whole building and give us recommendations on HVAC, mechanical, handicap accessibility, structure, and all that will come forward then.
And is that, is that done by grant? Have we applied for grants?
That'll be council's decision once it hits the budget.
I'm not wondering if this could be included in that upgrade to the building.
We're not at that point, counsel. We're a few years out from...
We haven't put any of those major upgrades in the three-year budget right now. We, there's nothing pressing at that facility. As much as it's old, it's in good condition. Yes, some things are worn down, yes, some things are a little older, showing their age, but by and large, it functions quite well. As long as that plant functions well, the rest of the structure of the building is pretty good. And we put some pretty good money into that plant over the last three years.
Counselor P. Boyd?
Assuming this passes next week, what fund do we foresee this $1,600 coming out of before Christmas?
My intention is we take it out of the rain recreation materials.
Ice center materials.
The ice center materials, our operational account for the ice center, yeah. I tried to pull the report right before, and I didn't get it. It's probably loaded on my computer downstairs right now.
So we have sufficient funds in there?
Yes. We'll need to look at the funding source.
Yeah, it'll be close.
We'll bring that for the December...
I'll bring it for council.
Big wedding account, it's kind of limitless.
There we go.
There's a limit, counselor, I promise.
Is there anything else that needs to be discussed here? Because we have a recommendation on the table here. Okay, do you want to read that recommendation, Jeff, please?
Move our mayor's woman to recommend to council to partner with Carson Minor Hockey and Carson Figure Skating in principle for a third of the cost of getting a new I.O. system for the ice rink to a maximum of $1,600.
Okay. All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Okay, so our next, policy number 1629, adult materials bylaw. Is there any questions with that at this point in time, or any recommendations?
I think it's very well written. It was written with legal counsel, by legal. I think we should recommend this to be brought forward for first reading next meeting.
Okay, any question on that?
Was that a recommendation?
Yeah.
Mayor Cronin's got a recommendation to move forward by law number 1629 for the next council meeting for first reading? All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And policy C-40-2, custom contract work policy. You had a chance to read that over?
This is just upgrading costs and...
It's just, yeah, it's an upgrade on the former policy, is it?
Yeah, my, as I went through it, I just noticed that some things are, you know, large amounts, some things are very, you know, nominal amounts, some things are still the same. I was just wondering if maybe administration could comment on, you know, some of the reasoning on some of those?
Administration, who wants to take that one?
Yeah, Jeff's gonna speak to it.
Getting my exercise tonight, counselor.
Yeah, as if you need it.
These rates are determined in a couple of ways, but one of the large criteria is we look at the Alberta Road Builders and Heavy Construction Association guidelines. So they put out annual rates that the industry generally charges, so a lot of them are comparable to that. So if they didn't move or didn't change, then we didn't push them either. Some, when we looked at some of the rates, and I worked with Noel, Noel did the bulk of this, but some of the rates, the increase was quite high, and we felt we didn't need to jump as far as they did. So some of our rates are mitigated versus that index, but we try and stay somewhere in the ballpark of the heavy construction index.
The majority of these machine rates and wages are used in our audit purpose for machine time and wages that are allocated to construction of our infrastructure. So we need to make sure that we're keeping up with those rates. We do have some custom work, but as you've seen from our budgets, we have really nominal amount of revenue coming from custom work. So...
Counselor P. Boyd?
Jeff, maybe you could speak to this. I know the county sometimes feels complaints from private contractors that their employees are taking business away from the business sector. Do we ever get any complaints like that?
Yes, we haven't, I guess I shouldn't say we've had complaints. We recognize it as a potential concern. Let me word it that way. So in the verbiage preceding the table, one of the very first things is that in principle, the town will encourage residents to use private contractors wherever that service is available. If we have heavy equipment operators that can do the job, we will just not propose that we want to take on the job. In fact, we've run into an example where we are doing a job on Thursday that we don't have any private contractors that can do the job, so we will be doing one. But generally, no, in principle, we are not in the market of finding work where the private contractor exists in the community. And we don't make the rates to discourage that, but we want to make sure our rates are not so far below the market that everyone's coming to us to provide the service. We want to make sure they reflect the market rates, so that we're not a financial, there's not a financial incentive to use a town.
And then just last question. I noticed of all the price changes, the largest difference is in the sweeper? What happened there? Were we just super, underpriced, or it's...
Just let me find it here, counselor.
I may have a bit of a conflict of interest there, since that's the only town service I personally use. And yet, it's the largest jumps.
Unite?
Sorry, that's...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Again, it's just reflecting the index, is what that one is. And I actually think we, I think that might be one that we mitigated a bit, too.
Thank you.
Because it is, and one of the reasons is it's one that nobody else offers in the community.
Right.
And it's one that we do contract out. So that one is a bit of a unique example. We do contract that machine out, but it isn't something we're competing with anyone in the community for. And I think we did try and mitigate that a bit below the index, if I recall.
Who do we contract that one out to?
Sorry.
Who do we contract the sweeper out to?
Oh, yeah, we would do the motel, Dairy Queen, the hospital on occasion, large parking lots.
Parking lots, okay.
Yeah, any large parking lot, especially in the spring where they just...
After they've been sanded all winter, they'll have us come in and sweep them in.
Yeah, okay. Mayor Cronin, did you have a question?
No, no. I can answer the time.
Do we need a recommendation? I think we do.
Can I just ask, when they said sharing, are they talking 50/50, or are they talking some other percentage?
They're talking a third, third, third. Figure skating, minor hockey, and town, is what they're considering.
Counselor Banger, then, Counselor P. Boyd?
Jeff, I noticed there's only one quote. Is this, is this a good practice to get only one quote for work?
Moved away and everything, I haven't been down to the rink that often. When I was there, the PA system was absolutely horrifying. Is it gonna put these other two groups at risk a little bit financially with their contribution to it?
This is initiated by them.
And do we subsidize their financing?
Sixteen hundred dollars?
No, no. I mean, do we, do we, do we put money into the figure skating club and into minor hockey?
No.
Well, we do in the sense that we lose money in the hockey.
Yeah, if you wanted us to have complete cost recovery, we would triple their rate, hourly rate, but that would kill the program effectively.
No, they each take their turn running the concessions and they earn the money from the concessions, is that right?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Theoretically, they can each take their turn running the concession.
Okay.
I can speak to this a little bit, 'cause I was president of minor hockey for the last one. Figure skating has not wanted to run the concession simply just because of volunteer numbers and it's hockey that's there the majority of the time.
Yeah.
So hockey's had it the last few years, and actually this year it's almost third-partied out to a group that hockey found to run it for them. So we've been fine, I mean, they're doing a great job this year, actually, it's as good as it's been in years.
Okay.
So they're doing a great job of it, and it's a good arrangement, they seem to be very good. So we've just wanted somebody in there, and minor hockey for probably the last five or six years has been the one responsible for the concession.
Counselor Bagory?
I hate to keep at this, but are we upgrading the ice rink at any point in time?
We did, yes, and we have been, and yes, we will be. We did a major overhaul on the cooling system two years ago, so we rebuilt the engine on the plant. We've redone a lot of the puckboard around the outside, and we had to do some repairs on the cooling system and the floor, that was more repair than improvement, but yeah, we've done...
What else have you done?
Yeah, and it's part of the recreation master plan. We just had Ferrari Westwood go through the whole building and give us recommendations on HVAC, mechanical, handicap accessibility, structure, and all that'll come forward.
And is that, is that done by grant? Have we applied for grants?
That'll be council's decision once it hits the budget.
I'm not wondering if this could be included in that upgrade to the building.
We're not at that point, counsel.
Yeah.
But we're, we're a few years out from...
We haven't put any of those major upgrades in the three-year budget right now. We, there's nothing pressing at that facility, as much as it's old, it's in good condition. Yes, some things are worn down, yes, some things are a little older, showing their age, but by and large, it functions quite well. As long as that plant functions well, the rest of the structure of the building is pretty good. And we've put some pretty good money into that plant over the last three years.
Counselor Puywa?
Assuming this passes next week, what fund do we foresee the sixteen hundred coming out of before Christmas?
My intention is we take it out of the rain recreation materials.
Ice center materials.
The ice center materials, our operational account for the ice center, yeah. I tried to pull the report right before and I didn't get it, it's probably loaded on my computer downstairs right now.
So we have sufficient funds in there?
Yes. We'll need to look at the funding source.
Yeah, it'll be close.
We'll bring that for the December.
I'll bring it for council.
Big, big wedding account, it's kinda limitless.
There we go.
There's a limit, counselor, I promise.
Is there anything else that needs to be discussed here? We have a recommendation on the table here. Okay, do you want to read that recommendation, Jeff, please?
Um, yeah, if I can find it just a second. Move Mayor Cronin to recommend to council to partner with minor cars, minor hockey, and present figure skating in principle for a third of the cost of getting a new IO system for the ice rink to a maximum of sixteen hundred dollars.
Okay. All in favor? Karen, thank you. Okay, so our next policy number sixteen twenty-nine adult materials bylaw. Is there any questions with that?
At this point in time, or any recommendations?
I, I think it's very well written, it was written with legal counsel, by legal. I think we should recommend this to be brought forward for first reading next meeting.
Okay, any question on that?
Was that a recommendation?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor Cronin's got a recommendation to move forward bylaw number sixteen twenty-nine for the next council meeting for first reading? All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And policy C forty-two, custom contract work policy. You had a chance to read that over?
This is just upgrading costs and...
It's an upgrade on the former policy, is it?
Yeah, my, as I went through it, I just noticed that some things are, you know, large amounts, some things are very, you know, nominal amounts, some things are still the same. I was just wondering if maybe administration could comment on, you know, some of the reasoning on some of those?
Administration, who wants to take that one?
Yep, Jeff's gonna speak to it.
Getting my exercise tonight, counsel.
Yeah, as if you need it.
These rates are determined in a couple of ways, but one of the large criteria is we look at the Alberta Road Builders and Heavy Construction Association guidelines. So they put out annual rates that the industry generally charges, so a lot of them are comparable to that, so if they didn't move or didn't change, then we didn't push them either. Some, when we looked at some of the rates, and I worked with Noel, Noel did the bulk of this, but some of the rates, the increase was quite high and we felt we didn't need to jump as far as they did, so some of our rates are mitigated versus that index, but we try and stay somewhere in the ballpark of the heavy construction index.
The majority of these machine rates and wages are used in our audit purpose for machine time and wages that are allocated to construction of our infrastructure, so we need to make sure that we're keeping up with those rates. We do have some custom work, but as you've seen from our budgets, we have really nominal amount of revenue coming from custom work. So, go on.
Counselor Puywa?
Jeff, maybe you could speak to this. I know the county sometimes feels complaints from private contractors that their employees are taking business away from the business sector. Do we ever get any complaints like that?
Yes, we haven't, I guess I shouldn't say we've had complaints, we recognize it as a potential concern, let me word it that way. So in the verbiage preceding the table, one of the very first things is that in principle the town will encourage residents to use private contractors wherever that service is available. If we have heavy equipment operators that can do the job, we will just not propose that we want to take on the job. In fact, we've run into an example where we are doing a job on Thursday that we don't have any private contractors that can do the job, so we will be doing one, but generally no, in principle, we are not in the market of finding work where the private contractor exists in the community. And we don't make the rates to discourage that, but we want to make sure our rates are not so far below the market that everyone's coming to us to provide the service. We want to make sure they reflect the market rates so that we're not a financial, there's not a financial incentive to use a town.
And then just last question, I noticed of all the price changes, the largest difference is in the sweeper, what happened there? Were we just super, underpriced, or it's...
Just let me find it here, counselor.
I may have a bit of a conflict of interest there, since that's the only town service I personally use.
Unit eight?
As yet, it's the largest jumps.
Unit eight?
Sorry, that's...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Again, it's just reflecting the index, is what that one is, and I actually think we, I think that might be one that we mitigated a bit, too.
Thank you.
Because it is, and one of the reasons is it's one that nobody else offers in the community.
Right.
And it's one that we do contract out. So that one is a bit of a unique example, we do contract that machine out, but it isn't something we're competing with anyone in the community for, and I think we did try and mitigate that a bit below the index, if I recall.
Who do we contract that one out to?
Sorry.
Who do we contract the sweeper out to?
Oh, yeah, we would do the motel, Dairy Queen, the hospital on occasion, large parking lots. Yeah, any large parking lot, especially in the spring where they just... After they've been sanded all winter, they'll have us come in and sweep them in.
Okay. Mayor Cronin, did you have a question?
No, no, uh, I can answer the time.
Do we need a recommendation? I think we do.
Jeff, all I'll say is these prices are pretty cheap.
Are what?
They're pretty cheap.
He means reasonable.
They're reasonable.
Well, they're beyond fair. I mean, some of the, some of the, some of the work I've had done in Lathbridge, and I'll tell you, I'd almost phone Carterston, tell him to bring their equipment in.
Maybe we'll do that.
You put the operator on top of those machine prices, right?
That's the real operator.
The top section generally includes an operator.
They do?
Yeah, all those ones in the top section, any other?
It's machinery and...
Yeah, 'cause it does say truck only and the other equipment there.
All right, yeah.
Anyway, so...
Okay, so I'm prepared to entertain a recommendation.
Okay, I will, I will make a motion that we recommend to council approval of the custom contract work policy revisions.
C forty-two?
C forty-two, yeah.
Okay. All in favor? So we just have some quick correspondence here, and then we'll be ready for Mr. Atkins. Okay, so we've got the FCM Annual Conference and Trade Show, I'm not too familiar with this, do you want to mention a little bit about this, Marion Forth, please?
Sure, I can speak to it. I just want to counsel to be aware, the FCM is the Federal Association that we belong to for municipalities, and...
It's like AUMA, federal.
Correct, yeah, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, is what it stands for. Because conference is going to be held in Edmonton this year, I thought that council may want to think about sending a delegate. We have been members for years, but we haven't participated in the conference, so...
How many would you recommend to go?
Well, that will be up to council to determine. I just thought that I would put it on your radar, the registration isn't open yet, but it's there for your information to consider if there's an individual who would be interested in it.
I can tell you that having followed a little bit what they do is very interesting. AUMA presents papers at that conference, and that is through that conference that I discovered that I had in the past tried to bring forward the issue of our education. And that's where I read the very first papers that AUMA had presented, and kinda inspired me to move along, to do the motion that we presented, changing the wording.
So you feel this would be a valuable conference for some of us to attend?
I don't know that we need everybody to attend, it's expensive to, it's expensive to go there, but we all have an education fund, so if you want to use your education fund, remember it's for four years. Once it's done with, you're done.
Counselor Puywa?
Yeah, and just to clarify, so they do an annual conference, but it's not always in Alberta?
No, no.
It's all over the place.
That's why it's...
Well, it's not always in Toronto, it'll be across Canada, yeah.
So it's only every few years that it's here locally?
Marion, do you know what that conference is?
Probably less often than, than a few years.
I wouldn't mind going there.
I think they choose probably one province, so they would rotate around.
It looks like it goes over weekend, it looks like it starts on a...
I think we should discuss this, and we don't have to discuss it tonight, but like I said, it's on our radar.
When the registration comes, I'll bring it forward again, but just, I just thought I would bring it to your attention.
Okay.
I'll wait till it's in Quebec.
Okay, okay, well then we'll just, we'll just put this aside for now, and we'll bring it up at a later date then. Thank you, Marion. The next item is a letter from, looks like the Veterans and Troops Support, have you had a chance to read that over?
Marion, can I ask you something? Seems to me that last year, we had a similar request that came to council, and we didn't, we chose not to participate at that point, and because we have done this project, and we felt that project was definitely giving us more value for our money than that project. Am I correct?
Yes, that is correct. And we did, last time this invitation came in, we did check with the Legion to ensure that it's a legitimate organization, because, you know, there's people like that out there. And they have not participated in any great way either, and so they felt the same, I think, as council did, that the project that council's investing the five thousand dollars a year into for the memorial plaques are...
Well, better than a full page of advertisement, yeah. So essentially, we don't have to do any recommendations.
All right, so we'll just put this off and move on?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, I was just looking at it, the advertising is pretty pricey.
Yeah, you can one book.
Yeah.
Why, we'd do better with the...
Okay, so the next item is a letter from Trans-Canada Pipeline, just information regarding public awareness project, the pipeline safety. Anything you'd want to bring up or discuss on this, or is this a FYI?
That's what it is.
Okay. All right, then I think that's it, and I entertain a motion to go into our camera.
All right, we'll make a motion, we go on camera.
Okay. Oh, wait a minute, we do have delegation...
We got delegation.
We need to do that, yeah, we need to do that, forgot about that.
So, yeah, I thought you maybe wanted...
So retract that.
I'll retract that.
Yeah, okay. All right, Gordon, we'll give you the floor now to talk with us this time.
Excuse me if I move forward a little bit again, it's not so you can see me, it's like in here.
Yeah, we're not in camera, Gordon, just so you're aware.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for seeing me, and good evening, David. I think we've got all of the conditions covered now except one that we'll discuss in a minute, and I'd also like to put forward one other suggestion, but related, actually to a suggestion the council made. Back to the question of street lighting, and the question of EIS standards and/or decorative street lighting for away climbing. The suggestion was made, and initially I put it aside, that perhaps it would be best to make the road a private road. And in reanalyzing that, and I've found a source for liability insurance, I'd like to propose that we do that, that we literally register the subdivision with the road as a private road. As you all recall, the private road is narrower than normal, without curbs and gutters, without sidewalk, and with a lower speed limit, and so the lighting situation, I don't think will be an issue. We would then make sure that a blanket easement was covering the entire road width, so that the town could do maintenance, repair on any part of the road, and provide normal services with the exception that we would cover the costs of liability insurance relative to the surface of the road and traffic activity on. And I think that that would work for both of us, and the, initially, I would be covering those liability payments, and then it would be a part of the community association in each purchase agreement, that the people that are there can be in effect internally taxed to cover the liability on that, on that road. So that would be the first precaution. And I hope you won't think I'm too facetious here, but from the last meeting that we had, all of the monetary considerations that you rewarded me, I've got double buttons on my wallet pocket now. We went through a lot of items last time, I was expecting more. Anyway, that's the first item, I don't know if you want to deal with that, actually, I guess you have to deal with that at council next week, so that's the first. I don't know if there's any questions or any further thoughts on that matter, but...
I just would like to make a comment, I think there is great wisdom in doing it that way, because from an architectural point of view, you'll be able to keep the integrity of your project design, and I think it's a wise way to handle that.
Well, and the other thing, Mayor, is that I think it'll give the town an opportunity, not only to be testing all of the limits of a special subdivision, because there are quite a few things that we've got in here that are a little different, but also to show you how a more refined approach to street lighting, and particularly in a forest like this, that it will provide better circumstances for the subdivision, but at no risk to the town, so I agree, and I think it's a good suggestion. Okay, the other item has a little more to it, because it was one item that you did come back with, and this is related to that small portion of road that is within the floodway.
Is it on the map here, Gordon?
Yes, it's on that map. And if you look at that map, you'll see that very small triangle, there's just a very small triangle there, where the triangle, if you actually take the surface area of that portion of the road, it will be roughly the size of this road. Now, the question here obviously is a question of risk management. And from your point of view, there are several things to consider. One, I'll use the comparison, in other words, on the one hand, you're using your decision-making process to restrict that small area in terms of interpretation, whereas if you took the entire road from there west to the golf course bridge, as I pointed out to you last time, that entire area was a landfill, and we literally had to take that right down to clay to replace it and restructure it. Now, that portion of road, in my view, would have actually been more at risk for the town than this portion that is the floodway. Now, the reason I'm saying that is, in addition to what we've talked about before, I think you all do understand that the floodway, whether it's precise or not, and whether we get a new flood plain study out of all of these events in Calgary, which I'm hoping we will, but whether we do or not, the floodway is a simple function of elevational grade. So if the elevational grade changes, the floodway changes, simple as that. Now, in this particular case, if we go back to the original request that I made to the department, you may recall that the first reason that it came out was that council had some concern in that flat area, or that floodway area, that if the infrastructure is lost, for example, that you may be subject to the cost of repair with no help from the province. And in discussion with Marion, she correctly pointed out, even in a normal circumstance, you really have to have what is defined by somebody, a disaster, a more universal disaster in order to tap into those funds anyway. But the letter that I got back from Jim Choles, I think helps to alleviate that particular question. But let me go first to my request, the letter that I sent to him. Basically, I described what we had in plan and what we were doing, and then I indicated to him that both these lots that are affected, and also the road, have great elevations of eleven forty-six and eleven forty-five. If you go back to his response then, he reaffirmed in his own mind that the elevation of the high watermark, we'll put it, in the two extreme events that occurred, the highest watermark was at eleven forty. So we're already at six meters different in terms of these two elevations. We can't build the road where we need it to be without elevating it there in any case. So when we elevate it, we will in fact be changing the floodway, so it won't fall into the floodway anyway. Now, if you read further onto his letter, he insists that anything that's built in the flood fringe and/or floodway must be floodproof, we've got that covered with the design controls and so on, and no obstructive development should be constructed in the floodway. Now, this is a point of discussion, because their definition of obstruction is a berm of any kind that would in fact be over a length of the edge of creek water source, because as you all know, if it's a short obstruction, a lengthless room, for example, has no impact whatsoever. It's when it's a longer obstruction than that, where it creates a bathtub effect, and when that is breached during an event, the water gets behind the bathtub and can't get out. And that's why they simply say no obstruction. But if you, if you read further, he does say the majority of the creek road appears to be in the flood fringe, and the raising in the flood fringe portion would not violate our guidelines. The road crosses the floodway at lot twenty-eight, which is what we're talking about, constructing the road at ground level in the floodway would not violate our guidelines again. So again, what I'm proposing to you is that the area is small enough, and we would be reconstructing that portion of the landform to a proper structure, and by armoring it with the riprap and so on, we actually are creating a better long-term and a less risky situation, both for the fish as well as for the golf course and the land in question. So the one last thing that I will mention, and that is that I know that you're sensitive to the requirement of the town, not only to get some help and funding through this whole flood situation that's created some havoc in the province, but you have several areas within the town property, including ER, MR, even some golf course, and so on, that you will have to repair. And if you don't repair that, I predict that you'll have serious problems down the way, so, and I think you're committed to doing that. Now, I'll have to say to you as well, that you cannot do your repairs without the proper mitigation in our location as well, because what's happened, as we discussed last time, the erosive effect of the slight mismanagement that is the bridge has created the problem, has caused you a great deal of grief, and unless that is corrected, both on our property and your property, any funds that you put in there will be wasted. And so I think we're, not only are working together, but I think that working in concert. Now, we have made our application to DFO, the Sarah Group, and to ESRD by way of almost a forty-five page document. We've had the biologists come in, we've had the studies done, we've done the river modeling, we've gone to extensive expense and time in doing that, a lot of which will, as I said to you last time, will be to the benefit of the town with no cost to the town. So again, we have to work together to do this, and it's my suggestion that this small area should not cause you risk concern. And the one other thing that I will mention in the discussion with Marion, she correctly pointed out, that if you favor the suggestion that I'm making, in other words, that this small piece be allowed to proceed in terms of the road construction, that it should be conditional to us receiving from the province the right to mitigate that small little triangle that's in that area, because that triangle, there's a portion of that triangle where our road is going, if you actually look at on the plan, the portion that has eroded over the last three events, there's no more of them between here and that wall. But beyond that point is where the road is. But on the other hand, beyond that point, not within the floodway, but because of the lack of armor and the erosive action, there was more soil taken here, and the two big trees that fell into the water. And so we do have to mitigate that, one way or the other. And that mitigation requires DFO's consent to fill in a pond about this size as well. And so without that, if they say no, then we'd go nowhere. And, yes?
Gordon, that brings me to my concern also. You know, we have applied for funding from the province, and we have been approved for the project, but we don't know to which extent. That we still do not know, which tells me that we don't even know when we can even think of starting the mitigation of the creek banks. And so to align your project with the town correction of the banks, I can't even tell you when that could happen.
Well, and I don't disagree with you there, but the point that I've made, and that is that if we don't work together, if we don't solve both the problems, no problem will be solved. And so I hear what you're saying, you're going to go for some funding.
We have the approval of it, but we don't know the extent.
You don't know how much yet.
You see?
And without knowing the extent, again, it's, I guess, presumptuous of me to suggest that they cannot extend funding to you without solving the two... that they cannot extend funding to you without solving the two or three problems that we have identified. They cannot, because it would be useless.
So, this is exactly where I'm trying to say. As much as we appreciate your concerns for your property, we have great concerns for the banks of the creek, but can't even give you a timeline, nor where we would start the remediation, because we don't, we have a Plan A, we have a Plan B. We don't know which one they're going to allow us to do. And that's an issue for us.
And as I said, the one way that we can and are approaching this is that even though I may be doing some of your work and spending my money to solve some of your problems, I have to do it, or else. You may or may not be restricted from doing it, either by funding, by decision, or by their limitations. But the portion that I'm already working on is not a question. Nobody can stop me from doing that.
No, I understand, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Sure.
But for us, $2 million, it's not too small. Pocket of change.
Council Creed?
Yeah, just, you know, having, you know, said that, you know, that the mayor has expressed, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is our priority, this is the priority area that with the funding that we will
It is.
That we will tackle, that would be the priority area, so.
Counsel Ben-Gree?
Gordon, whatever we do upstream affects what's downstream.
Yes.
My question to our administration is how do we look downstream, down by the old tourist hut, down by Main Street Bridge and so forth? Have we got flood protection down there if we start working up here? Are we going to exceed those flows? Or do we need to work on those areas?
As part of this project, we already have a study done of the entire length of the creek within the town boundaries that we did a number of years ago. But as part of the application, that's one of the things that has to be worked on by the engineers. And part of the work that Gordon's already done for his project is identifying cause and effect is what needs to be looked at, right? So, on any application that goes forward, that's all addressed as part of that application.
Okay. And I might add, if I could there, that as Marion said, the application that we've made with the 45-page document and working with all three of those agencies, they will not approve what we're doing if what we're doing negatively impacts what you are doing or what you have done. So, our engineers have modeled it according to responsibilities in the act, both to ourselves, to, in fact, it's the same thing with me with the Dairyland. They actually, if I weren't the same owner, they'd have to ask me whether it's okay, what they're doing, because it will have some impact there too.
Counsel Peewey?
So, George, on this floodway here, and the flood fringe, specifically the floodway, the little part that comes over the proposed road, and then specifically the part on the other side, are you saying, you know, you said we were filling up an area like the size of a small pond. Is that specifically in that area that you're talking about?
In part it is. It's just a little bit beyond that, where erosion took place because of all of these earlier effects. As I mentioned to you last time, the event this year was actually good for us. And it was good for us because what happened the first time around was it changed the bed of the river. And in changing that channel, that's what caused most of our problems. This year, the event, or last year, the event was sizable enough and flowing strongly enough that it actually changed and tried to go back to what it was before. And so, it took what it needed to off of our bank, and then it redirected the channel to the center, and it's now going back to where it was before. And if we get the things in place that we have designed and the groynes in there, I think the retraining of the channel will solve both of our problems, and then the armoring of those portions of the bank will solve it long-term, both for the fish habitat as well as for protection of real estate.
So, for the intent of this floodway here, this little part that's going over the road, you know, I realize what we're doing is we're beefing up or raising the elevation of the road itself. Are we leaving anything of a lower elevation on the other side, or are we raising that whole section up so that there would be no pooling?
There would be no pooling.
Right.
And both because of the re-channelization and the groynes that are going to be constructed. I think you all understand what the groin is, but with the groynes and the reconstruction of that, but more particularly, when we build the structure for the road, and you may know that what we've already done there, the road surface is constructed, we then have an additional three to five meters of top surface, and then we're doing a three-to-one back slope from there to the creek bed. And that is also structure. So, we'll now have an additional, you know, maybe 30 feet that will be structure complete. And so, as you, the question you're asking, the answer is no. There will be no bank, or there will be no edge that can
No lower elevations on the inside.
That's right.
Okay. Mayor Gordon?
My question is for Marion. Marion, I know that you were supposed to have a meeting with someone regarding the creek and the repairs on the creek, regarding that funding from the disaster, funding of the province.
Right. We actually had a conference call with a representative from the Disaster Recovery Program this afternoon, and I asked the question about the $2.3 million submission we'd made. And what she said to me is that they anticipate that the initial application will have estimates, and that those estimates will change. And I said, "But we're talking from $124,000 to $2.3 million. It's a significant change." So, what happens with the program? We'll get the engineering done to a point that we can submit, and we expect to have that done in the next two weeks. The applicant, or the submission will go in, they'll send the engineer out, their engineer out, to meet with us on site. They will then tell us what portion of the submission will be approved, whether it be the full submission or not. The other question I asked was about the impact of Gordon's subdivision on our mitigation and our mitigation of, or, sorry, I can't call it mitigation, it has to be called remediation or else it's not approved under the program. They're looking into whether it should be a joint application or whether it should be a separate application on behalf of Gordon. So, they'll get back to me on that. But we've set some timelines internally to get this moving forward, now that we've got confirmation from the provinces to the process. But again, I can't say how much of our funding, our application will be funded until probably, I'm thinking, two to three months down the road before their engineer will give us a "Go ahead." And I think
So, that's the issue, Gordon.
That's not a problem at all. We're talking first part of March.
Essentially, I can see if they were to do a joint submission, it would be wonderful. But, time, just for
I was suggesting to Marion today that probably should change the name of the town from Carstens to Kenmore.
And we can get much money. Just for clarification, because we've got the disaster, what's the other one called? Resiliency Fund, that we want to reapply for, that they had asked us to do some engineering and work on, the deadline for that is March 31st. So, we've set a timeline internally of the end of February, having an answer back from the province, so that that gives us time to be able to apply to the resiliency program for any remainder of funding that may be required to do the job correctly.
Can I, just a question?
Yeah.
If we get the funding we're requesting, is it the expectation that it'll be done before the next flood season, or?
What we would do is try and do some of the bank work. We would be able to do that probably prior to August, but any work that would need to be done in the creek, there's a very limited timeframe, and that's about two weeks in August. But saying that, we may be able to get special permission for emergency remediation work to be done. So, those are all the things that we'll look into with our engineer over the next couple months.
Timing.
But we understand that we need to do some remediation prior to the end in June.
Right.
And there's priority areas, as Counsel Creed had suggested, at the bridge of the golf course, some of that area there where we're losing infrastructure that we know will have to be done before we have another event, or we'll lose major infrastructure.
Gordon, do you have anything else?
I guess to the bottom line, it's simply, I'm asking council to remove that small section from the concern relative floodway. We've got backup for that, but make it conditional to me receiving approval from these agencies.
And for us to receive?
Yes.
So, funding?
It goes both ways.
Right. Well, and as I said, I mean, obviously, there's going to be some shared funding, some shared responsibilities here. But what I said earlier, I'm not a mayor, and that is that there are portions of what I'm doing that I think should be funded under the program and in the interest of the town. But if you don't, I don't have a choice. I don't have a choice, I've got to do it. So, if it comes out of my skin, then it's got to come out of my skin. But the reality is, is that I think by working together, that the overall thing and the program will work for both of our benefits.
Gordon, no doubt in my mind, that's all in the working together, we can move this project.
Sure.
It's not on my mind, but as I say, my concern is all those unknowns that we're dealing with, the same way as you deal with.
Well, as I mentioned to Marion today, it is very frustrating. We've got between eight and 10 agencies that are involved in this process. I've met with every one of them, and every one of them have said the other agency has no jurisdiction. Every one of them. And they bad-mouth the other agency, they're the only ones that come. And to consolidate that all into a single answer, and so, DFO have been holding off on their reply, because they don't want to approve something that may have to be finessed again through the province. So, they're waiting for, they're all kind of juggling. Anyway, it'll come to pass.
Counsel Peewey, you have one last?
No, no, I'm satisfied, thank you.
Counsel Creed?
One more, since I'm here for a request. I'd just like to make a request on behalf of the managers of the golf course. They had some concerns when they visited with us previously, that they weren't being communicated with, you know, they said somebody came over to tear out the bathrooms, and they didn't know about it. Anyway, just would ask that you be considerate and communicate, you know, with that golf course management group, you know, whenever you're doing anything that's going to impact the golf course, I think they would appreciate the communication.
Can council give me the contacts there? Because I did have communication with them, but I may not have had the communication with the right people.
With the right person?
I think, well, I think if I remember it better, yeah, I think it was best if anything that might need to be addressed to them be addressed to Marion or her administration, and then she can communicate to the proper people, give the notifications.
And that works for me.
Yeah, that'd be the better
And we've been trying to cooperate there, you know, there have been different issues. For example, just as a minor example, when we're building that road off of Ninth, here we're building the structure, and the golf course irrigation system is watering and saturating the road every day. By meeting with them, initially, they said, "Well, we've got to go to town and change..." I said, "It doesn't matter whether the town says so or not, you've got to stop watering my road." And they did. And the same thing when we're giving access to each other, that's worked out fine. But I appreciate what you're saying, because we've got to work together. The benefits are going to be mutual, and there's no rationale that I can think of where we would be at odds.
Yeah, yeah.
But it is important to know who I'm speaking to, and I prefer
Yeah, that would work, if you communicate maybe ahead, you know, ahead of time, anything that's going to impact
Because I'm aware that there is some conflict within the management group as well, and so, as I said, some of the people I was talking to, because they were the ones who were on-site and managing, the comments that were coming back were not friendly towards some people that were not attending meetings. You've heard it all.
Yep, that's right.
Gordon, with that in mind, I'll tell you, the management group looks forward to this development, because there will be golfers down there.
Oh, no question, no question.
Okay, so
Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon, thank you.
Appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, I think we have nothing further to discuss. Need to go into camera?
Yeah, I will. Oh, yeah, you can make it.
I'll make that motion to go into camera. Counsel Teppen's made a motion to go into camera, all in favor?